Ten behind the table. Michael Short, after tomorrow. What I told me. One mission under God.
Jonathan O'Hara, one thousand four hundred and twenty dollars and point four cents. Two pounds for small plane ninety six dollars fifteen cents and twenty five dollars.
Did you, were you able to dig any further into that apparent?
Yes. Finally, this gets the extra they're still working on.
Okay.
And some of it will be written off, because some of it might be like they're working on that difference. So that's how I was explaining it.
I'll explain the binder here in a second, but let's start with the monthly report. Operation All Trucks are running right now. One's gonna go in this shop here shortly for our steering post leak. But that just came in this morning, so I didn't put it on your phone, but it's still short three minutes. We hired one, she hasn't started full time yet. She's got to do orientation to our system. We hired our last full time EUT and one part time EUT. Full time EUT is up and running, he's on shift, and the part time is orienting today. CPR training's been going on monthly at the library, we just had one last week. JW Diggs has reached out to us as well as high school kids, they need to have it as well. We have one EUT out on medical leave. He had an injury back, he is doing light duty, he's actually in the office. He's working directly with Suzanne and the other stuff. As you see, all the vehicles up and running, only one thing's changed, tires had to be ordered for a vehicle, other than that. That monthly courses. Next one, I have the Gokey List, and you have that quote in front of you. This is a project that Richard, Frank, and I have been working on, trying to secure the ambulance spaces. We have five man doors, four outside, one interior. The one interior is the equipment room for their cogs who end up going, wants to get that program running. Richard came up, this plan is the best one we can come up with, as a key card, kind of like you guys have the county courthouse. And we also possibly put our identifier on it, working with him, just gotta deal with her, get her to cards. The project itself costs five thousand three hundred ninety five dollars and fifty five cents. That's for five handles with the scan cars and a hundred of cards as well. Richard will have the program, he'll keep that updated, and anytime we lose one, sell one, on that's out of our budget. I would like your permission to go to go to get it approved here, so I can go to the county council and ask for funding, because the five thousand three hundred ninety five dollars fifty five cents is not in my budget. But I wouldn't, I have to bring it to you first.
Sorry, Richard, would you run off? I know, he was over here, but just, because I'd like to know if it comes, I know it comes with a box of cards, but are they compatible with, you know, can you swap them, assign them as needed to the other systems?
Oh, I see, like the county courthouse card, I don't know that it's.
So necessary for the narco stories.
That is, I'm here in the door, yes, as well as extra doors, man doors to the three bases.
At the risk of displaying my own ignorance, why are the electronic keys and locks needed, not just the old fashioned kind?
The old fashioned kind lock, they have when Travis was a director, he did some kind of keypad function. Yeah, and yeah, once you have to keep those updated, I don't even know how to program those, those are better operated, so you have to change those out as well. I don't know anything about the whole system. Give us what you, that was like you said prior. Yeah, what we've got, that's what's existing, this would be an upgrade.
But what's wrong with the old fashioned? Downgrade, if you would.
Okay. I can do that.
I mean, that's I just want to know, is there something in the requirements when you're storing the materials that you're gonna be storing for these types of blocks, or what, what, what grade of security lock is required when you're storing that?
Okay, I think I get you right, so you're talking about the storage room itself?
Right, right, and, and all the doors leading to it.
Yeah.
Or, or a door leading to a rig that's got it on it, you know, it's all the same.
Those are not locked.
Well.
You can walk in the garage door, you can go walk in the ambulance, but then they're double locked in the ambulance.
Okay.
That's a staple part.
Yeah, I just, for my yeah, from what I know from other physical security areas, it's a good idea to keep the entire pathway from the sensitive material to the outside as secure as possible. So I just, I just want to know what the minimum requirements for as secure as possible are.
Well, I mean, I don't have any correct answer or direct answer for that yet.
Okay.
But the way I can look at it is you have a county, county card to swipe in, right?
Yeah.
But if you have a key, you have, you I'll think of who went in that door.
Okay, so this is this adds, this adds extra accountability to see who's coming and going, not just that someone may have or may not have. Yes, do we have a camera system basis?
Uh, no, there's only one, two cameras, and that's at Magic Three, that's in me. We're talking about the
Oh, yeah.
Um, there's two cameras, they're infrared, they're facing this, they're facing each other. Obviously, we have to switch that, once the narcotics get in there. Get a question about the county courthouse.
So because the ones we got for the courthouse like these are technically interoperable with the ones that work out at the jail.
Yes.
Are these also interoperable with those two?
I believe so, yes, they, because they accept what, what it is, it's a proxy reader.
Yeah.
So any kind of proxy card that they scan into their system.
You just have to
They have to scan into their system via the reader, that's why they have to purchase the special reader, because he's gonna move in his computer. Every card he sets up, instead of him going to each base and swiping that card at each reader, because you have to register that card at each reader, being as it's not on the same network. Um, he has to scan this into this system, register it, and then it would automatically talk to the rest of the readers.
Okay.
A lot of cards will work, so yes, my understanding being as the proxy card is the same type of card, just different facility, different coding, but that all gets handled in the program.
Cool. Answers all my questions.
With nothing, sign of security in it, it's probably a little better way that we keep, you know, like these transactions in and out.
Right, yeah, that's a that's definitely a worthwhile upgrade.
Yeah, this is, this is a cheaper solution versus going like a commercial solution, where you have to put servers and EDAs. You're talking thousands of dollars yearly, and all that fun stuff, this, this, he isn't, still getting the security with the price. There's options, you know, they can get my readers down the road, add it to your system.
Well. I don't know that we have to answer, but it is a question that will have to be answered. You don't have it in your budget, or would it get pulled from?
That's what I was thinking.
No.
Official, right?
They can start the process.
Do you want a motion to approve it, so it's formal?
Make the motion to approve this quote for five thousand three hundred ninety five dollars and fifty five cents for electronic lock upgrades for EMS department.
So, follow the favor. I'm coming to you today also asking for a, towards the sounds, a county issued cell phone. Right now, I pay, well, Richard pays forty dollars, it's a, comes out of his cellular fund, we pay forty dollars for a mobile hotspot. A cellphone is
a twenty nine ninety nine for the internet only device, so whether it's hotspots and readers and the the EMS currently has, that will be for, for devices, which would be their laptops, and they also have a hotspot, they were using for the records. What he would like to do is he would like to upgrade that device, not create a plan, which is just ten dollars more, actually, sell line slash
Ten dollars a month.
So it's ten dollars more a month.
Yes. Seven hundred and twenty dollars a year. But I have to come because it'll use the thirty dollars plus the dollars, which was a forty four.
And I had asked him for two guys, because it's our, all of that comes out of the county's internet, so.
Interested that you're on cell lines, so that needs to be approved too.
Cellphone.
Right, so.
Yeah, lines there.
Already have a number.
It already has, it already has a service, it already has a service line, all we're gonna be doing is upgrading that hotspot line to the cellular line for additional ten dollars. He's not, he's not adding a line, he's not, I mean, he's always doing is upgrading that service at that point.
But we're providing a cellphone to it.
Providing a cell, yeah, and I don't know how your guys' policy works with that, so that's, we're saying something you guys have to talk about, obviously. The reason I had asked him to approach you guys, because it's not in, it's not his budget line, it's county's.
And the whole purpose of the county owned phones, we are trying to put the first net, which is the program that we use. If you don't know what first net is, it's if Richard has a regular cell phone, I have first net, tornado comes through, we're trying to talk on the phone, I'm gonna kick him off, I get priorities. That's what happens for all first responders, police departments, firefighters.
Majorities, and it's been placed
and it's something I've been working with Richard on, I tried to get it on my phone, ended up being sixty two dollars. Sixty two dollars on my regular bill, which I thought was gonna cancel, then, then they canceled my phone. Because they thought I was still attached to the person. So I would like to have a county own for that.
I'd say for an EMS director, I think that's communication.
Into a minute, but they're working good now. They're all quiet, Brian.
Taking okay, give me time to think, Spencer, we had to add, you say add something?
Just for, you just need to approve for a director to have a phone. It's only ten dollars more a month, you just rattle up the top of the list, what directors have them, like what, you know?
EMA, health, EMA, parks, planning commission, it's fair, and then I don't know what highway is.
Yeah.
So.
Okay. Like the ones who approve issuing a phone. You so you can do this.
Call the favor. The phone in the one.
Yes.
All right, next I have is, last month I brought up the sheriff's department back in two thousand twenty, got approved for holiday pay, for the holidays that they actually work, meaning Christmas Eve and Christmas Day. I brought it up, let's have the same done for EMS. I forwarded to you, like you said, after last meeting, but I also brought it to you.
Did we actually approve? So I know that we've, we had a change to the handbook in front of us, we actually approved that? I would like to table this and get a fully comprehensive and do it all in one. Not piecemeal, so we don't have a piece we may have forgotten, we do again, there's some sort of conflict between, you know, a specific action. An outlier that the handbook might not address. But I, it needs to be done. This is Christmas and Christmas Eve, okay, oh yeah, we got time before Christmas.
Well, it'd be for any holiday, though, I mean, other holidays could fall on
Right, which is, yeah, which is, yeah, and that's kind of why I wanna have it all together, and one thing that'll get one of the handbooks.
Okay, and the last thing is
Second vacation time registration already updated the handbook and handed that out for the last. But can I get your motion to table for the holiday?
Motion to table the holiday pay request.
The last thing I have is the holiday vacation time, we just gave a vote on it.
Yeah, I mean, Justin handed out the updated handbook last meeting, did you want to put that at this meeting, or? He has a copy of it, too.
Trying to get done for fourth of July, is that what?
No, this is just for a second vacation time, not
This is the second vacation, that'd be the important update in there, which we discussed a couple times prior, is actually stipulating, you know, Eric Dustin's this way, that if the director were ever changing retirement somewhere else, it stipulates in there that they work a two day work week, so they take two days of work, crew time, which would correspond to five days, I believe, with your other county employees, that equals one week, so somebody doesn't take Monday, Tuesday off, if that's their shift. And a director in the future goes a last page of Monday, Tuesday, off the schedule, we have, schedule you for Thursday and Friday, instead it's just an extra added layer of protection, we've already adhered to it procedurally, it just codifies it in the second vacation time policy. So they get a week if they, if they have twenty four hour shifts instead of the normal seven and a half, eight hour shift.
Eric, can you just give them a short rundown of what their employees would receive as far as second vacation time?
They come out to the same, so from zero, one, zero, two, actually, you get one, you get two days. Two to five, that was two weeks, five days.
Four days.
Or, four, sorry, four days, a four day work period. Five to eight was six work days, and then ten plus was eight days total, you cap out. The only thing that carry over, you never carry over vacation, vacation time, you use it every year, you have to, otherwise you lose it, the only thing that carries over is your sick time, and that maxed out at fifteen days.
Yep.
Fifteen working days.
I don't know, it sounds fine to me. Just to highlight it, is that where the change actually is in the?
Yes.
It's basically the same as what all the other county employees get, except for awards for their schedule.
You gotta be different. To accept the policy, change to the handbook, second.
The last thing I gave you was the binder, and it's something that we're working on, thank you for your, it's called the State Dave and Baby Bubs. What happens is a box is created in a twenty four hour facility. Police Department, fire department, EMS. Working with Becky Bailey. We're trying to find a location right now, it sounds like EMS to be first place. Fire departments cannot, because they're a volunteer service, they're not there every day. Police departments, they spend most of their time on the road, that's what takes them away. Right now, we're just in, obviously, the infancy stage here. I want to bring it to you for you guys to review, there's nothing to vote on, I just wanted to be aware of it. I, for Justin, for you, because you'll see it today, city council will see it tonight, and then we contact them, their lawyers come in, and there's a contract that, but we'll make sure that everybody's involved, just want to be upfront, need to spoke we're working on.
Good news at the highway department, we're only two drivers short, that's the best we've been. So we have two part time CBL drivers and two mechanics, we do have five people on the mowing crew, with one open position available. Last week, we hired Jessica White as our new asset manager. So a lot of good things happening right there. As far as grant status, the community crossing, twenty two dash one. The next meeting, we're gonna open the sealed bids for the paving project. Twenty two dash two is gonna open up in July, so there's still a little money left that we're gonna apply for to get the full million. The community crossings, twenty one dash two, paving on Southern East, actual painting is done, they're working on putting some stone alongside the bur area, and the last step would be they'll paint the stripes on there. I don't know if you guys have been down that road yet, but we really raised it up and got it back muddled, it was really crowded in some areas.
That's a nice, nice, I drove down, it's in my neighborhood, it's nice.
As far as equipment goes, I did get the truck lease locked in at the lower interest rate, because the interest is gonna be going up, so we're locked in at the lowest interest rate possible. We did buy a second asphalt hot box. It's the same make, model as the one that we have, ours is a two thousand fourteen, so this is a newer hot box. And we bought a used Ford F by fifty from the town of Alton. They used it to pull their wood chipper with. So this truck's never been in the snow, it doesn't have a plow on it. So this truck's never been in the snow, it doesn't have a plow on it, there's no rust on it, it's very clean truck. So it came with a fourteen foot cargo bed, the dumps. So we have two wood chippers, so next time we have a big storm, we can send both wood chippers out. And I'll use this pickup truck to pull the hot box. So pretty good news there, pretty exciting. As far as the bridges go, all the bridges have been weed whacked around. We're in the process of washing all the bridges off, Oregon and Jackson Township are done, we've done a few in Center Township. The gravel roads, we're gonna. Try to get them graded at least once a month. So July is coming up, so we'll be starting that round.
Insert dust abatement.
No.
Is there a set plan for that?
For the last couple of years, they have not used any kind of dust label for dust control. What we've been doing is taking the road drivings out and laying it in front of people's houses for. Three hundred yards to knock the dust down in front of people's houses. So the people, the people call, they go on a list and then we take care of that. So as far as I know, right now, there's nobody on the list. We just ground up. Oh, like sixty-six hundred tons of asphalt that we had sitting in the yard, we came in and rounded up, so we've been hauling it out on the roads. Tomorrow, our workman's count insurance is going to come in and do an audit. From what I understand, they're going to come in and do a walk through the shop and then they're going to go up to a job site and. Evaluate us at the job site as well. Which I don't suspect, I don't plan on any issues, everything should be in shape. As far as road maintenance, we are still cutting brush back. We've only got one tractor out running, we're going to have it up by five hundred north for the air. Kind of get that area cleaned up. Last week, we did lay four miles of asphalt bindings and with the pager and we rolled it in. This week, we're going to go back and chip seal over the top of it, we're chip sealing today and tomorrow and Wednesday. I think when we get done, this is going to be. A really good road, it's not going to be very expensive. For, we have to use this in the right position, can't use it on primary roads, upper secondary roads, it's going to be a nice job. On five twenty-three, Markinus came in from our insurance company and talked about poison ivy using three-point contact coin in and out of the question. And placement of safety signs. So we're continuing to train. As far as the solar projects, we're continuing in the mammoth project, we're grading the dirt roads once a week there. And we're filling the potholes in with seventy-three stone. We had a couple complaints that trucks were cutting through on our road, so I got with the. Mammoth and they put no truck signs up at the intersection of three hundred east and seven hundred south, they were cutting through the highway ten. So we got signs up the next day and they had a team meeting and that took care of that project. As far as next year, they've got the road and culvert evaluations done. They have sent us copies of the culvert evaluation, there's three culverts that need to be replaced. I'm waiting to hear back from them on how they want to proceed with that. My suggestion is we get it taken care of sooner than later. Also, I forward everyone an email from North Fork Southern, they'd like to close a railroad crossing. So I brought up. Showing you the area that they want to do. Basically. Railroad crossing is on. Two twenty-five south. Between highway twenty-three and one thousand east. So we would have to divert traffic a quarter of a mile up to two hundred south. Problem with that is it is a gravel road. So when they were talking to me about this, I told them that. You guys might be more acceptable if they would pay to pave those roads. So they're offering. They would like to make an offer fifty-two thousand for the permanent closure of that crossing. Now, with that. They're going to kick in fifty-two thousand five hundred to close it. End up has agreed to kick in seventy-five hundred. So we'd be looking at getting sixty thousand dollars. To close this intersection. Plus, we would be eligible for a grant as well. Now with the grant, I'm not sure how much money, I think it's up to forty thousand dollars.
How much, so how much would it cost to pave that road?
The sixty thousand. We're coming real close.
Is that one of the things like where, you know, they either want it done or, you know?
You got some houses down, do they, they, I don't know, there are. And. Very good clothing.
Indiana ranks like the top ten percent for accidents where people go around railroad crossings. So they're trying to. Close as many as they can.
How many accidents have there been at this crossing? Enough to, I mean, enough to make this the standout to close for some reason?
I can't. I think they just found that by diverting. A quarter of a mile like.
I think it's, I think it's a use that road. Besides, people that live right there. It's the first one, the T road, three one south over.
They still haven't maintained that road.
Yeah, we'd have to maintain it because there's houses on both sides of the road. Yeah, we'd end up with two dead in road.
You'll definitely hear from the property owners.
No, I know.
I make a recommendation. I, I mean, without additional information as to why they identified this potentially as a dangerous crossing, I'd like to build some more information, more about southern, first of all, second of all, I'd like some input from the property owners, because here's. Potential pitfall that I see, we make an affirmative decision here on record not to close that minimum, those property owners get killed with that crossing. We refuse to take some action, if we get input from the property owners to say, we don't want this closed, and then an accident occurs, you see how they've shoulderered some of that liability itself, so I think before we answer, maybe we get a little bit of input from the property owners, probably going to say no. But you see how that looks less like work family act if there's a dangerous cross section versus, so that might be a recommendation before we say no.
It looks like there's probably about six houses on that.
Northbook Southern may have information that shows this particular danger to cross, it's something we have to think about, but more than just that, this is our offer, explanation is right.
Yeah, we can take that approach, see. Yeah, that sounds like a smart course, course of action to me.
Have to advertise that for our next meeting or how?
Yeah, I, we get probably, how many properties there are, sections, that's how easy it would be to reach out, maybe direct contact, even if I get addresses. You know, I can send out mailings to them and say, this is being considered, your input is requested.
Yeah. Yeah, we can do that.
Charlie.
Smart idea. Yeah. Maybe do that at our next meeting.
Do you want to get Justin's addresses for that area, too?
Sure.
All right.
Thanks, Steve. We make that, Jack.
Bring me any coffee?
It's crazy over there this morning. Morning. The reason I'm here is I'm asking for some money from American Rescue Plan for a couple items that would be. One of them that will do cot, which I don't know, I know Dave's been out on calls and saying that our cot is pretty old. I checked in beginning as, we have two cots now, I checked in the beginning, both rebuilt and both of them are sold, they are made. And I really think that they're probably the two we have. So I'd like to ask for that, that'll be about two thousand dollars in shipping and handling. It becomes wholly assembled, it's where I have to put anything together. So I'd like to have that. And then I'd also request about two thousand dollars for additional supplies. Where our numbers are up quite a bit and the. The last little bit that we've had. Pro overdoses, we ended up having to autopsy's on that because. There was just enough questions, one was a thirty-eight year old guy that just kind of collapsed. But he, equipment, or equipment, I think. It would be for just gloves, twenty-one gauge needles and syringes. Regular body bags and then we do need desperately be these periatric body bags, there are a hundred of those. And those are tips for like onestites. Any, any where somebody is down for a long time and then they're really useful for drowning. I figured this number probably right up to. Maybe a little, or it wouldn't be. But there's no stuff there, would like it anything, or not asking for anything, it would be really. And you know, even if we had, wouldn't have been able to have the cost, but still with a down to one. And for just operational purposes, we want at least two. That's, that's what I want, yeah, that's my Christmas.
Have we heard anything new about the O P R seven?
I just got an email. As I was on vacation, I was just informing where they were at the process of building up distribution. True. I, I looked at his request to, well, it's taking very valid, if you decide you guys want to support it, I'm willing to support it, but we look at the council as well.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
They've used framework that how we're splitting it up, which pot will we put this on?
Well, this is something that he would normally have purchased, so it would fall under this lot revenue, okay, yeah. Would you agree, Rachel?
Yeah, so if you want, we're spending over the loss revenue, then they can buy it tonight and make purchases.
Thank you guys very much. As well.
And we got the sheriff's up next.
So S R I is the company who runs our sheriff's cells. Their fee is going up as of July first, a hundred eighty dollars versus the hundred dollars that they currently charge the attorney towards their properties. We have to have it approved that we're going to enter that contract at a hundred eighty. But we also need to raise our fee, the max that we can raise, the combined fee is three hundred, so it would be one eighty to S R I, one twenty to us. We, we split that between county general and the sheriff retire.
And I have the sign coming to here perfectly.
I guess this has already gone through you.
I looked at the section where we were saying here.
Let me just prove this on the reading. Make the moment, motion to approve the ordinance to establish the sheriff's cell program and sheriff's fee. And the amendment to. That's right, sheriff's cell program fee. S R I. I got my ones night and then it's all. Is there a motion approved benefits? About one million twenty-three thousand three hundred forty-nine dollars and fifty cents.
Let me just tell you that the reason that's.
Yeah. For motion approved, so. Motion to approve the payroll claims in the amount to two hundred and seventy-seven thousand seven hundred nine dollars, nine ninety-seven cents. So move second, hold in favor. All in favor. Right. Is there a motion to approve the limits from Monday, June 6th, 22? So moved. So all's favor. Right. Yeah. No. Which one do you want to start with first? There's three of them. I guess so. It was like. I won't check whatever you got. Yeah, since I passed around the pictures, let's start with Coons Lake here. This is the continuation of the dispute about Kramer Beach. Which was beach and then kind of got ignored and now the park board is insisting it's a beach again. Which run by the documents I was able to dig up. Seems to be valid. But there were questions. Before you started here. I think I don't know if you ever saw what Marty had written up. Yes. Okay. It's a mess. I mean, I barely even know where to start here. Cause I, I'm looking at the planet, I'm looking at. And it's a plant that actually has measured markings on it. This is in line with all the other easements we're trying to assert or reassert.
So is this under the jurisdiction of the park order right now? I mean, I know what they're reading, they need to be each and they think, I mean. Cameron, is this under your jurisdiction that you know?
Technically, I believe that's where it left off. It is under the jurisdiction of the park. Yeah.
If, if it got.
The, the three main ones are obviously Bassett Beach. What the opposing party didn't want to call the Coons Lake Beach, so what we're calling it is our, our access. Our access to the water. He was saying, oh, it's called that, so that will get much called afterwards. Um, but those are the three main ones that the park board has.
And they named it Kramer Beach. At one of the meetings.
Yeah.
So I mean, they need to maintain it, correct?
Uh, when you say maintain it, do you mean like in terms of signage, like having the highway department go up there?
No, not highway department, park board.
I know, but are you talking about signs?
Talking about the weeds, the mess that is the actual plane.
Yes.
Yes, there's a big thing on there, something that definitely needs to be taken care of is there are round. Soon they are the round. The round, uh, picnic tables. There's another picture that shows a little better. Yeah, one's listed. Well, there, the, the tabletop is, is nearly level with the ground. Yeah. Those need to be.
Why is there a notice that says it's a private beach?
That's part of the dispute.
Not right. Correct?
I was like, I mean, I have a close on property, I guess there's a lot of time. Doesn't really. Having bearing if it's public property, I could place a public property. Knoxville Parks is private. Well, no, that's, that's a bad example. If I own property next to you and I could place a sign in there that says this is, then maybe the jurisdiction. I guess, what's the nature of the disputes though? I, I was in contact with their attorney for probably a month back and forth.
Did you get a copy of this? For these.
Oh, market. Yeah. This kind of. Well, I think we left, I mean, all due respect to Mr. Robinson, he was very respectful when we spoke to him, but I think where I left it was. This is county property. So people need, we are in some way infringing on private property rights and need force rate your disposal. Also, if we are committing any type of casualty on our designated property that's causing damage to your client's property, then we can abate that. We just have to know what the damage is like. If we're not maintaining the property, if we have raked up sands moving into their property, so we can take care of it. That's easily solvable, but this is county property. And again, if you don't believe that's the case, then it's your case to be made. So, you know, the question is, which it looks like from your pictures. You know, it's not being, or there's certain things that could happen to.
Yeah, that was, it was real sound.
That I would say.
If the.
There was one tree. Surely there, there's been one tree, there was a, um, plastic picnic table that the park had chained to one of, to the tree there so that people would have shade. And that tree has since been cut down and the picnic table's been moved over to the guardrail with the threat of it just moved back, then we'll cut it and burn it.
The only evidence I saw of a tree removed is the stump that this picnic table is chained to right now, is that, is that tree you're talking about?
Yeah, the stump comes like this. They cut it like on an angle, they cut it like left angle, right angle, so.
One. That's not.
Yeah, and then they made it more of an angle. They like.
This is, this is from this morning.
Right. So they moved it back, they moved it, it was up against the guardrail, do you have a picture of where the guardrail is? It was moved, it was moved up against the guardrail. This table was moved up against the guardrail over the weekend. Um, somebody must have moved it back last night because it was over here as of yesterday. Um, one of the, one of the other issues, were you there this morning?
Yes. Do you know, it says any of these picnic tables out at this beach, how they got there?
The park brought down the two green ones.
Yeah.
You guys brought these.
Those have been there for a while.
You brought that one. That was the first one you brought down.
Was that done in the last year?
No, that was done before these were done years ago.
Yeah, okay. That's.
It would have been 2018 or 19 or early.
All right.
Well, Karen probably didn't, wasn't, there wasn't probably a clear understanding of whether she was supposed to be maintaining it or not. So now she knows that it needs to be maintained.
Okay, and then also, I don't know if you saw this when you were down there, um, they have put signs on.
Yeah.
The property inside the fence.
Yeah.
Saying that no parking.
And, and like you just said, it's, it's on their property, they can post signs as they please.
Okay, but posting the signs and stopping the people from coming down to the beach. And then when they do go down to the beach, there's.
Now, one thing that we might need to formalize. And I didn't get a really good picture of that is the, is the end of the, the road, for lack of a better term, easement. It's paved.
There's good picture. You got one.
Okay. If you put them together. Is this established as a? Is this something, is a, is there a formal thing that we have to do to make sure it's a known parking zone? Or?
That's a new apartment though.
Yeah.
But then you're going to hit people that do drive down or take their golf carts down to the beach.
Well, this is, and that's the same issue we have at a lot of other easements around, not only Coons Lake, but also Bass Lake.
Okay. This is also still part of Cherokee Road though.
Sorry. Right, and.
Cherokee Road goes down to the water.
And if, if they're going to call it a road. You don't typically park on a road.
Well, that's all we have at Coons Lake are roads. I don't know.
You would have.
Dan knows, they're very narrow.
If it's parking now, then you just buy another one and say, no parking, he doesn't need to park it, it's no parking in your question. Publish it in the newspaper, assess a fine if they do, and then. If there is after. It's if you.
But it deserves, as it is right now, what differentiates this area from say that other spot off of Circle Ave in Hickory. Where they've got people parking in the fire lanes.
Is it the one we sent the letters out to?
Yeah.
Uh, we sent them a letter saying, you keep doing this, we're going to report our rights, but, so I mean, that one.
Are, are, are our rights in that case different than our rights in this case?
Insofar as you choose to regulate it differently, but as of right now, if it's easement, they're blocking access to property, we treat it just like we treat the other property. If they're, if they're in some way, clearly people's ability to use that as public access, then it's treated the same as the other piece of property unless you designate it different.
This is a road and those are only accesses.
Sometimes that's just a matter of.
Okay.
Well, the other, the other property, they were hitting, I mean, it was parking.
They were, the other.
Any access people could access, so.
Okay, Mike, so my other question is, are residents of Coons Lake allowed to go down to that beach and utilize it?
Yeah.
Without being shouted obscenities and they're going to call the police if they stay down there?
I don't live in Coons Lake and I can go use it if I want.
I understand that, but they've been, people have been chased off the beach all weekend. I've had over 50 phone calls to my house over this weekend.
Who chased them off? Shouldn't I chase them off?
I will.
Well, Bill, I, when I talked to Bill Duhon about it, he told, he told.
He's right behind it.
Um, that you guys. Was it about having those signs removed?
I said, we could remove them or have the highway removed them if we had an order from county attorney.
Highway didn't put them, did you put those up, Dan?
The private beach ones?
Mm-hmm.
No.
The officer told us that the, I know, parking went up. And then they suggested we might give it, do something like that.
Sign somebody else's property. Me, my recommendation would have been, probably be to put up your own signs in this public beach. I, I won't, I, I would strongly recommend it, it's trying to enforce removing a sign that's on somebody else's property.
I, I don't intend to do that.
But I would, you know.
Does agree.
Even, even though that it was put up so people can't park in there. I mean, people have parked there, that beach has been there over 100 years, Kramer donated, Kramer.
Where's the donation?
Um, Craig.
Probably somewhere in this.
It isn't. There isn't.
Anyway.
There isn't.
Um, I can't know why you'd have it for me to over two years if it exists.
That's a false statement.
Yeah.
Mr. Wolf is here and is there any difference?
My main concern is the people being, my main concern is the people being able to utilize the beach. It's going to be in the 90s all week, people have kids, not everybody lives on the water at Kramer Beach at, at Coons Lake. The west, the east or the west side of the lake is probably the poorest end of the lake. And those people go down there and use it with their kids.
And who stopped them from doing that?
It was my understanding, you and your hu, your husband was screaming at people all the time. And it's also my understanding.
All right.
And it's also my understanding that.
There's no need to argue amongst yourselves. Talk to us, don't talk to yourselves. If you want to have a conversation, take it outside.
Because.
Oh, I just, the police were killed because there's this thing would be for the problem.
I can't tell you that off the top of my head.
Oh, okay.
This. Yeah, this should cover all of that purpose little picture. I would think.
This was something that Marty had referenced and it's been pretty exhaustive.
Yeah.
He spent a lot of time on this, that's why I've not tried to recreate the wheel because.
Did you read what Marty did because he's not saying there's a park down there in his documents?
So I would maintain the position that it's county property. If somebody thinks that they are, their personal property rights are being advocated by way of us claiming this is county property, then they can act otherwise. However, we also have an obligation not to take any action that in any way harms their property, which by, I don't mean by hoping it's a public beach. I mean, if we're not maintaining the property, if we're pushing sand on their property, we can't do that. If it's being, we need to stop.
Now, I'm going to get you involved. Is yours, you asserted to me that the area directly in front of your fence, between your fence and the lake shore is somehow yours, your domain.
It's no different.
I am more than happy to have your attorney talk. But as a general rule, the, um, the toral and repairian rights apply here to private property. And, um, part of what's happened is the parks board has created a nuisance. There are people down there at all hours of the night. They've done such things as they dug sand out of the Yellow River. Put it down on the beach, touching the water. And they've introduced an invasive species known as a snail musk. The D N R knows about this, I was kind enough to inform them, I have pictures of such. The two, the Parks Board and the K L A just aren't responsible enough to be doing this sort of thing. They're causing problems to include erosion. Invasive species. They need to, they need to go. Now, you do have over a couple acres of park ground. Not one grain of sand has been put on that, but if they do go forward and do it, they ought to do it responsibly. Secondly, these other places that have actual parcel numbers. There's no granite sand, there's no park bench, 30, 40 feet, none of that. But in this eight foot space. You want to come down and violate my private property rights to include repairing and the toral. As your attorney pointed out, that Coates North Shore is not part of the Simpson and Frost Park. Now you also have what's called the Stark County Park that goes from what used to be Sand Lace to the corner. Not one grain of sand, not one picnic table. But you're going to come over to private property. Since I've purchased it. You're going to pave it. You're going to pave the road, which is causing, that along with the piling up of the sand is causing water retention problems. But it doesn't matter what I say or what I do. Contact my attorney. Because there is no public park in front of me, there is none. I should have inland waterway, lotoral and repairian rights. They're being violated. I also got knuckleheads down there all times of the night drinking, hollering. I've even had the K L A president flip me off. Drive by, yell at me, go down, yell at my wife, drive by, yell at me, and then proposition me. And for the record, I'm not interested.
Well, that's not what we're. No, and that's, that's a tweet, that's a tweet.
Maintain my private property rights and, and, and insert himself. Let's. And, but contact my attorney. Because nothing I say and nothing you say holds any weight. The, the deed in the plat map shows it's not a park, any discussion.
Marty, did you give a, that, that you pulled up then?
But you do have parks.
Yes, Marty, what's the difference between your property and ours? What can you tell me?
What if I were to back up to your property? Put a table down and call it a park, that's what's occurred.
We got it, we got it, I got it.
Please and thank you.
So the, so the ad issue is whether or not, because this is what he's talking about, what is a park? This is the southern border of. But.
Acres of it.
I mean, effectively, what is the difference? This, this road, no. This road is this corner. Okay. But the question is, I mean, this is kind of similar to that spot over, that spot over by Circle and Hickory. As far as years ago, where you can place a pier when it's parked. Um, there's, there's a, that pier at the end of the. Um, there's, there's a, that pier at the end of the.
Yeah, well.
Right. And I think we've got this, a similar question, a spot in Bass Lake. I mean, gotta get all that sorted as far as. Where, at what point on the lakeshore can someone attach a pier when it's not, when their property line doesn't go all the way to the shoreline?
But that's the problem. The Indianos Code says there's no parcel between you and the water, your property line. It fluctuates so taxpayers don't complain to you that when the water comes up to us, we don't complain and then when the water goes back, we don't complain.
We own the water line.
We own the water line just like anybody else. Except for those parks.
Here specifically, and I have a question about product last time. But look, as I will say. It finds, actually, I think it's Mr. Miller. Actually pointed out, the code credit, again, pointed out, so it's actually for me.
So this?
Yeah, talking about here's, there's a difference between permanent structures and non-permanent structures. Basically, what it amounts to is when it comes to peers, that's more within your natural resources commissions per view. Or there is a difference between a temporary structure, non-temporary structure, how much depth you have relative to the shoreline. Um, I guess long story short, that is, it's not regulated by us, those peers. It's regulated by the Natural Resources Commissioners. The Indiana Code section says, create the commission. There's an Indian administrative code section that says the commission was created, these are the commission's rules for regulation of peers. That doesn't fall within our authority, you know, because within this administrative code section, it talks about peers. It talks about non-obstruction of neighboring property, uh, you know, peers of water rights, but that's not regulated by us. So why, why would say we stray, we, we tend to move away from that? Discussion about that, that's natural resources commission type of. Issue and we're stepping out of bounds or authority to regulate that. Long story short, because I know that was brought up last meeting, we got on the cap half as much time as what I wanted to. Since I'm also patient with cap, but yeah, so peers, we tend to not, for good reason, stray into that territory. We just don't wanna regulate an area that this legislature has said this is regulated by the administrative commission, so.
So are people allowed to use speech?
County property is, as far as, I mean, what do we call it? We call it beach, we call it amusement, we call it free range service. It's a property.
So in front of Mr. Wolf's is private property too?
Can I add something here?
I, I'm just saying, you're arbitrary about what you call county property.
That since this is a disputed issue and some of these people have attorneys, I answer to you, I don't answer to the general. So I, I have to be, I'm not gonna be disrespectful then, but I don't wanna seem like I'm also ignoring them, but I've gotta follow the guidelines set forth by me. So I don't mean to be disrespectful, but I can answer some of those correctly.
Here's my point. They, when they built this house three, four, five years ago, they knew that beach was there. It's only become an issue the last year and a half, two years.
It was on the, it was on the, um.
My, my main question and the main reason I'm here is I'm tired of people calling me, can I go down to the beach? As far as I'm concerned, yes, you can. It's owned, the park deemed at Kramer Beach. So mine is not.
Responsibly to it. They have legitimate complaints, people are directing people, and this is not your fault.
Well, it's, I used to live across the street from there and I used, for years, that's, it, it's, it's never changed. It's been going on for twenty, thirty years. The kids go down there at night. They go down there at night. I, you can't, what are you gonna do? But my, my question is daytime in this ninety degree weather that we're gonna be having, in summers here, people wanna look forward to using the beach and they have nowhere else to go. There's nowhere else to go on that lake. They can't even, they can't even use the, they can't even use the public access to put a boat there because it's so scum and it's getting cleaned out. There's, there's not swimming areas. Can't go by Stanley's, Stanley's Marina because all that's been sold.
It isn't sold. There's a park in front of Stanley's Marina.
Stanley's Marina's property has been sold, his, his access ramp has been closed all summer.
I understand that. There's a building.
Hey, so it. Yeah, so it's established that it's Kramer Beach, it's, it's deemed by the park board, I mean, it's, it's maintained by the park board. So maybe they need to go to the park board to see if, I mean, if they wanna just read the lines.
Yeah. What I would suggest is, like, like, um, Justin said, they have a right to put a sign up in their yard. We right now have a right to put a sign there too, let them leave their sign there, just put our sign in it. However, you wanna designate this commissioners, we don't have Dan make a sign just so people know, hey, there's still a lot of use of water.
What I'm saying is it's under the park board. I mean, yeah, it's the commissioner's property, but it is the park board's jurisdiction.
It's a special taxing district, receives special taxing, right, and access symptoms by statute. So, I mean, the difference there is, come to commissioners, like, under the Indian carport statute, it talks about being a special taxing district. So people in Stark County pay a tax attributable to parks properties, which avails itself as a special taxing district that's set out, so.
But we don't get that special tax district. That was a mistake on Mr. Lucas's document and the county knows that already.
Yeah.
If I could just finish.
We don't get the tax rate.
I was at the park board meeting the other night and mentioned to Mr. Ballard about, you know, showing some love over the Coons Lake side too. So I think just a reminder to their, I mean, obviously Cameron's here, but it really needs to go to their board president and say, look, you guys are forgetting to take care of. Because the board should be guiding her and, you know, instead of all the decisions that's having her ownness, the board should also make that. Like, hey, stop by there once a week, just make sure there isn't, the picnic tables aren't thrown all over, there isn't debris. Um, and do that. Would that be reasonable to the other Coons Lake owner, property owners that are here, like, what you've seen there?
My main concern is people using the beach. The KLA does go down there and rake it. No, you haven't.
So that was the other thing I was gonna say too.
All the day, I put them up on the show myself.
We talked about Bass Lake, some of the Bass Lake people who are people from the campground, is that there can be a volunteer corps that's involved with, with beaches also. I'm sorry, park properties also. Maybe some, maybe the, maybe the KLA can help put together some people that would be willing to help our park board. Cause there is some proximity, there's some distance. And so if somebody makes a mess at Coons Lake Beach today, and if Cameron's normal day to go there was yesterday. Then obviously that's gonna be missed for some time, but maybe you can help organize that, maybe come to a park board meeting, say, hey, KLA, come to the, to the park board meeting. Say, we've got some people together that are gonna help you keep Coons Lake Beach. It's like, they're gonna do something similar at Bass Lake.
One of the requests that I got, now, it's, it's up to me to regulate this, but affairs mentioning, I know their attorney had, had mentioned to me that they were receiving some negative comments online. I hope I just encourage people also to, to maintain a sensitive forum. I mean. Property rights get heated to begin with, but it's not, it doesn't give anybody permission on social media platforms, you know, that we regulate that to threaten people to make falls, no matter who it is. It's one of the things their attorney asked me to, to make that clear to people that, you know, so I think it's very competing.
I have no control.
Well, not you.
I mean, there are the.
In general, I don't know who it was.
There's a site called Coons Lake Sandbar and it's blown up since Saturday.
And we can't regulate that. We're not the, we're not the First Amendment police, but I just wanted to mention it to me because it wasn't come, but I received from their attorney. Um, we, we don't encourage people to, to threaten the property owner. It's their exercise.
And the commissioners actually asked me to help them, you know, from kind of another direction, open minded. I spoke with them many times. I went out there many times, walked it. I totally agree that we don't wanna put things in there. It's too narrow. Like, there's a lot of things that I saw with my own eyes, because I swam there as a kid too. We trained there in the fire service for ice training and for, well, water access. Um, so, but I always in my mind, I thought it was bigger too. So, you know, some of the complaints as far as the size, I, you know, totally agreed with that. But I will say that when that got started, a lot of Coons Lake people were contacting me and, and it finds like, as far as, they're like, the greater good or more people. Feel like that should be a beach, and so that's already been debated, so I'm not bringing that up. But one person did say also that when that property was sold, it was being communicated by the realtor that they did not get exclusive private beach access with that. I, I don't know, but maybe somebody, there's some way to.
How do we prove what you're saying? I don't even understand this.
I'm not trying to debate.
No, no, it's not, and it's, and it's not really our, our first debate at this point. It's, I mean. We go by what's in black and white.
For the sales stock.
And what's in black and white.
Beach and the park being there, the sales stock, there's nothing on it. I've got it. I didn't wanna see it, but the realtor had it.
I don't have that.
I have it.
I have the plat.
Okay. So when you say things like that, you need to be careful, is what I'm saying.
I have the plat. The plat is what's the.
And the plat is no different than the next plat over. We are, we have our litoral rights.
No.
There's no parcel in front of us.
We have that easement.
No, you don't. There's no easement. It's not an easement. There's no parcel.
But.
An easement doesn't need a table on it. That wasn't an easement. There's no table on the easement.
Will, will your attorney contact that?
No, he won't.
My attorney can contact your attorney.
If you wish to take a legal action, you are free to do so.
But there is no parcel to provide by.
Okay. Alright, we gotta move on. Yeah, let's, so, yes.
So people can go to the beach.
Yeah, it's, that beach is county property.
Okay.
And we have delegated administration of that property to park board.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf.
Yes, okay. That's it. Okay. Next one. This next one, what is this? This next one. And we'd be, are we in a position to talk about Bass Lake anymore? Both of them?
So we, I'll be asking, there was a quiet title action filed last month that, they showed this review, Charlie, that they're not the one to serve on it. I've entered my appearance on that request in an extension to answer. We've been given the July eleven. I think there's other property owners that are likewise unhappy with the quiet title action they're gonna do. And that calls a couple of different attorney firms and most property owners, I don't really go into it on record, but that's what we've taken care of. Um, through legal processes that we brought up. I appreciate the individuals that showed up and told me about that too, because since we don't serve regularly, I didn't know it was out there. So that was one. If you wanna talk about that, we've taken care of it.
Okay, um, what about those tiers? It's not water.
Yes, that reverts back to what I was talking about with regard to permanent, non-permanent structures. So, and again, I've only had about half the time I wanted to put into this since I've been gone, but. That, uh, underneath IAC code that talks about permanent non-permanent structures, which I've done case law search, what constitutes. They say what constitutes a non-permanent structure is a structure that can be easily removed, but whether or not that includes a regular figure, just unplayable here. I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent sure about doing some additional research on it. Um, however, that is again regulated by the Natural Resources Commission. If they are impeding our abilities to put out our own gear. Then, you know, it's some, a complaint for actually making the National Resources Commission say that, you know, under the Indian administrative code section, they're violating the, uh. Regulations concerning non-permanent structures or permanent structures, and then they would handle, but we aren't given the authority to go and. You know, we're moving here from a waterway, especially if it's.
No, the big, the big question on my list was the, how close can that, whatever type of structure you wanna classify it to, their property lines? And whether that's something we would regulate and make, and may, a previous board may have already regulated, or if it's covered by something like.
So we're talking about how close the entrance is to our right of way. That's something, or our, our county property, that's something we have an interest in. Where it connects to the shoreline and how far it is from the property line. Pier itself, it's kind of a strange area, but the pier itself, it's a different story. Like, I think one of the planes for their peers was it kinda curved in. And the other one was up here and not block access to.
Yeah, the, the, the space between the two piers, I said rather jokingly at the time, was barely wide enough for me to swim through.
So, yeah, I mean, you could see if we, I mean, if somebody has the right amount of setback from our property line that the pier goes like this and blocks our way. This is our concern. This is the Department of Natural Resources concerned because it blocks access out to the public lake.
Okay.
So entrance point, judging by the pictures, I think is okay. I'm just gonna have to, and again, I just haven't had the time to look at actual access point, but the fact that curves out there is probably a natural resources issue because it blocks.
That's one of the problems I'm here for.
Okay.
The county access comes in on a name, it goes across the farm I property. To the east. There was a pier put there and I bought this property in two thousand six. In two thousand nine, a pier was put there. I was told that they have the right to put a property, to put a pier there and they're boats. They have pictures, they'll show that it's blocking. I should introduce myself. My name's Franklin Harper. I own a property, East of Western. CR two ten, our address is sixty one ninety, CR two ten, it is lot one of Laramie's subdivision, and I went to the water. Okay.
How recent are these pictures?
These here?
Yeah.
Oh, those are re, those are very recent. It shows that it goes right across from my property, from that, from that road. These are from pictures of the pier and how it's blocking me. It was from two thousand nine. I called the DNR. The DNR came out, very proficient people, checked my, asked my name, checked my ID, my property, make sure I was. And then explained repairian rights and said, not only were these people not loved, this was illegal for them to do this. They have agreed to stay off my park and their solution was. To put their pier on the property next door to me to the west. And it worked well from nineteen, from two thousand nine all the way up until this year because the property was resold and the new owner does not want. I'm using his property for the pier.
What's your address?
Sixty one ninety, CR two ten. Part of the problem with people using this. Access, it's not why, because it goes across the front of my property and my neighbor's. Property is also on an angle. There's no room. But yet they put piers and boats there. And there's a picture, two pictures of a boat that has leaking fuel. I'm in the water with my grandkids. I can smell fuel. I can see a guy.
That's definitely a DNR issue.
Yes, it is, but it's also an issue where there's, there's no respect of any kind. And they don't come until the weekend. Now the fuel has been dissipated, yet I lost, loss of use for my property. And in front of the lake, and I can't use it with my grandkids anymore. And I realized.
What is this picture?
And I, one of the other problems was me blocking the excess. I cleared all of the.
This is a different one.
Okay.
Than the one we were just talking about.
And I did pile it up there because I didn't want my concrete to stain. I didn't block the, uh, access to the lake. You could go around it.
Well. That's not really a thing. When it's, when it's just a, an, a county easement, you don't, you can't, that's going around it is trespassing.
Well, no, I mean.
I think.
I mean, I didn't block the whole access. You could, you could still get to the access, but you couldn't go through the center because the.
We'll come back in a second. The DNR said it was a legal, only a structure that they talked about how they were going to abate that. I mean, I think, and they can say all day long, it is illegal, it's illegal, but they say, look, enforcement action, they're going to, they can abate that.
No, it wasn't the DNR. I take it it was the neighbors telling me they can call the DNR. They just came by taking pictures, making notes.
I mean, because it's kind of the same, kind of the same deal. I mean, they can acknowledge it's illegal, they can, I mean, we can acknowledge it's illegal, but. You know, if it's not within the scope of our authority to regulate, you know, we're overstepping our bounds. I'm not, I'm not trying to sound like we're trying to kick the can down the road.
I know, and, and with that same thought, I have pictures where you'll have golf carts lined up across the road. They're on their boats and they're on from the date, and yet.
That is also something we can take care of. If, if they're parking along an easement or a public access point that, we can handle that. And we've been handling that with other, other areas.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's another one.
Yeah. Oh, you're talking about these people.
Right, meaning all the rest of the cars. And this isn't something I think we should agree with, but I think that you. So I mean, so I don't feel like you should be accused of doing something. I was only there for a short time. I didn't have a vehicle with a hitch. I had to get my truck. In the meantime. Our daughter was mother, needed an operation, went to the hospital, she was too much to kids for a couple of days. So it took a couple of days longer than I would have expected. And the daughter was mother, did I? So it just took.
Thank you, Charlie. Totally out. I mean.
Can I say something?
Yes.
Um, because the pictures from two thousand nine are, are current. We brought the current ones to you last time, as you know. And anything about putting it on the other property owner's property, we. And anything about putting it on the other property owner's property, we weren't putting it on his property, and it's not even my pier. We were just moving it over on the same county easement. It's not on the property, which also, as we said, had your fences and trees that they also took down, which is county property. But we never put the pier on anybody else's property.
How do you figure the trees and fences are coming apart, but he owns to the water's edge?
I don't need to talk to you.
Yes, just do what you're saying things that hurt children.
So are you.
Yeah.
Argue much, so.
Okay, okay, we'll take care of it, you can see a pier with our setup.
Then, you talking about this one?
It's the one that has the uh.
Lost it.
This one?
This one, these that were put in by the uh assessor, not the assessor, but the uh, comes out and.
Yeah. Surveyor?
Surveyor, comes out and he put the stakes in and you can see their pier is, as it starts off of the, his property and it goes across his property.
When was this taken?
Yeah, you guys, no, I didn't put any stakes in. I come out with Brian, the only time I've been to your Brian tonight.
It was a private ass, ass, assessor, that wasn't the.
Surveyor, give me.
Surveyor, sorry.
And the, yeah, and these are, so real description here, these are basically some flags marked where that old fence was right there. That flag doesn't even constitute survey state, survey state is uh three eighths free barment, but. Yellow or white cap on top of it, you know, have the surveyors initials along with the serial number on that cap.
Okay.
I can answer a couple of other things too, real quick, the dredging of the spoil that came out of the lake. First of all, you dredge during fish pond season, it's highly unequal, you're not supposed to dig anything in the stream or lake till after two thirty of this month. Uh, and that does require a permit from the DNR for dredging and placement spoil.
A dredging.
So that says.
It's just taking, taking out the.
Anything you touch, anything you touch in that water requires a dredge and fill permit from the DNR and ID. Second of all, the DNR officer that came out and addressed you should have also told you if you had a fuel problem, you needed to call ID. So those are some of the mistakes that's been made so far, if you got fuel or oil leak into the lake, that's not a county commissioner issue, there's nothing they can do to help. Period, you need, you need to call ID, who contacts a hazmat team that comes out, puts the nice little stuff in the water with the thing to hold the fuel from going out into the lake. That's not nobody's responsibility here, so if you have an oil leak or gas leak, you need to call the ID. If you choose you're gonna dig in the lake again and stuff, you need to get a permit, because trust me, they will come out and find, quite heaven. So, um, there's, there's a lot of issues going on with that, Brian and I took pictures and peers and, you know. The most of those, most of these questions that you talked about has to be answered by the DNR and the lakes act.
I did one time go into the lake with a tractor to pull out the seaweed.
I wouldn't admit that anymore if I was you.
Well, the DNR was called, it didn't, he was there as soon as I finished, asked me what I had done, I showed him, I admitted. He wrote a report, he said that he would file this report with the commissioners for the DNR, there would be a hearing. He came back and told me the. Report had been closed and that uh, no further action will be. And.
Consider that one a win.
Well, but he also told me that, oh well, you can't go in the water, you can use a, an arm or a backhoe of some sort, as long as the vehicle isn't in the water. And you can remove the uh, that's not true.
Not till after the thirtieth of the month, it's over the wires permit.
So are you asking the commissioners any, what are you asking them today that does not deal with water whatsoever?
I guess the only thing is. If I'm accused of blocking, other vehicles shouldn't be allowed to park there to block, maybe assign.
I think that's one thing we're.
That's the same, that's the same enforcement issue we're having every, every ish easement that's been a concern. So far this year is parking in those easements that are used by the public to access lakes.
Yes.
She are working on.
Right.
Okay, and this, I didn't get a copy to complete, but from what I understand, I'm blocking, I'm have a shed on the easement, is that been an issue? Nothing I've been aware.
No.
Okay, no sense bringing it up.
I, no, it's uh.
I think once we find out.
Yeah, we have.
Lines are.
That's our, that's, that's our next step is to define clearly what the easement is, because that's our property that we have to look at. And we can't look after it properly unless we know exactly where it stops, start stops and whatnot.
Now, like I say.
And that's. I know I got an email from you about, we need to coordinate more and do more to get, so you know where to put signs, cause.
Yeah, we need to know exactly where the boundary lines are.
Yeah.
If you need one driver.
Right.
And now that, this shed was here before I bought the property, two thousand six and two thousand eight, I went up to a planning commission and asked if I could replace this shed. So they gave me a permit, it's on my tax bill, it's got the permit number oh eight dash one forty four, but that's not an issue, it's not an issue.
No, not as of right.
No, not, not as of now.
Now, if we go out, now if, if, if we go out there, we, we do, and we're, Bill, we're gonna find a sign, you probably do this. To measure out the exact. Dividing lines or not, where this, where our easement in this spot is. This is one, this is one of the two we're gonna work on in between all the crap you've gotta do for the solar projects.
That's not really those area, that would be a, a licensed surveyor.
I would, I'd make the same recommendation in a couple of different towns now, you could might be moving, especially in some of these hot topic areas. To engage private survey, uh.
Oh, okay.
Surveyors to get these things, so it's gonna cost you some money, but it's gonna save us a lot.
Reason being, Mark.
Somebody fifty, sixty years ago did this to us and now.
First, first reason is they're gonna come back, first, first person that's unhappy is gonna come back, call for the conflict, then just law.
Okay.
Because you guys are commissioners and I'm, we're all elected officials.
Okay, well, that's, that's, that's. Again, I'm a new guy and I, I, I still learn, so, yeah.
His office is called surveyor, but it's not what he thinks it is.
And what I'm saying is that uh, I was issued a permit to place what was already there, so I can't see why it would be an issue, I just thought I'd bring it up now in case it does come up later.
They don't have the drawing here for any of that setbacks, any, I mean, it's hard to abate that right now, but glad you brought it up, because now you brought that up to county officials, now they should review that, probably have to move it, but. Um, but they need to review that first.
Do you need the piece back or these, or these for us?
Those are for you.
Sir, yes, sir.
Since that seaweed was not supposed to be removed from the lake, it was put on the public property. Where, I would like, I would be interested in knowing where it was disposed, disposed at.
I have no idea, I actually don't think.
If there was any fire, they started bumping it at the wrong spot.
No, that's.
I could answer it.
No, don't.
No, it's not, that's not.
I don't.
As far as uh. This western avenue, correct, down here, and this is the area in this peak, correct?
Yes.
Does this easement, one line follows straight out just like that from both sides of western avenue, straight out?
Um, our, our purview ends at the shoreline.
Okay, because our issue is Frank's property, is his boat coming over this way, this gentleman, of course, has got up here, and. So as you guys have seen, like you said, you can, we just want a clarification on, we just want to be able to have access to come down and line our boats up here, okay? But where we're at now, we're running into Frank's boat, okay, we can't get around it, cause he's actually, you know, as you see from the pictures, Justin, here. The pictures he's brought to, was, that's ancient history, that doesn't exist anymore, but what we're dealing with right now is a, is a pier that's actually coming across, but it's keeping these boats. Actually putting their boat.
Yeah, and Justin touched on that.
Yeah, I.
And the reason I brought that up for me, it's history, is there was a report made on it, I gave my report numbers.
Is there?
And it was a, a written report.
I did, I, I would like to see, so we'll work it out, that we just all have our straight runs, you know, there's really no sense in.
You guys, you guys need, if maybe you can give me that outside, thank you for bringing the material for us to review. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate your time and work, patience.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Just one, so anybody can put a boat in the water though, right?
That's not, that's really.
I don't, that's.
They don't own the water.
But there are repertory rights, we're having property conglotation.
Right, but if we're in between the two lands like that, you have no rights whatsoever out in the water. Anything past two hundred feet, I believe it is, is water, not, not owned by any property person.
That would be up to the DNR on that.
For water issue.
Well, this question, the question I heard, and I don't know that we can answer is. And. That'd be used to put water craft into the lake.
Or you come up with water, or just e, access to your water.
Oh, no, not to put in.
No, no.
Water.
We just want to be.
Oh, just, just.
On a shore station.
Beach, beach or.
You can put a shore station in a boat anywhere. Out in the water.
What we would do is from the next block over, they would have their boats lined up in there in that legal area, and they would walk through that western avenue easement. And then have a lane to be able to get to their boat, and it is now, but don't even have a lane to get to their boat.
Like you said, you could hardly swim through it.
And one of the problems is how many boats, and it comes up.
It doesn't matter, you don't get to.
Yeah, that's.
Everybody moves down that street, needs to have a boat.
Right, we're gonna have to. Yeah, that's, if it's in the water, it's out of our hands.
Yeah.
Right?
Just like at Park Avenue, there must be ten of them out there, but they're all out there on their thing, and the guy that lives there has a straight pier and his property going up. And everybody else just goes through the easement, but we can't do that because there's a pier going like this, so we can't even get out.
Again, that's outside of us.
Well, last time when we were here, he was gonna look into it.
And, and the result of not looking into it, three twelve IAC eleven three one is the site. Three twelve IAC eleven three one is the site where the Department of Natural Resources has kicked in. I'm sorry, statutes kick Department of Natural Resources, they've set forth regulations, but we can't, I mean, we can't do anything about it, that, that's an easy dismissal. If, let's say I wanted to try to enforce that tomorrow, and I enforce it against him, I'll have a motion to dismiss, because we don't have jurisdictions, it's all subject matter jurisdiction, and it's gone. It's gone, that's why we don't even travel down that road, something that's not.
Okay, now, last time we were here, you specifically told us, why don't you just run a pier all the way down the space that you have and put your boats farther out?
I said that?
Yes, you did, you said just do that.
I never.
And we, and we did say that we do not touch the land in that access, we never did, we never had it touch the land.
Say a pier is not, I mean, if I, I think I said that, but if I said something relating to that, then my research that I did after I said that, says that we're not involved in any way whatsoever with that. You're allowed to change your mind.
Yeah.
If I, if I did say that, my follow up.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, we're to make it into the minutes. Let me see.
I'm new to this, so bear with me.
It's question minutes.
Is there some documentation or some number I have to present to them? The DNR is not available, oh, well. It's the NRC. Would you like to make sure I'm reading that correctly? This is, that doesn't look like anything for us.
I didn't know, so it's something that I was. Cause anyone will smile, thank you.
I would, I mean.
Actually, it's true, maybe I'm just.
Oh, giving you a problem, this, I'm, gotta go on a flight, so I'm just gonna.
All right, okay, thank you very much, I appreciate you.
Oh, especially when just. How do we do that?
Yeah, excuse me, I have one question. This is kind of on the same problem, but this is not, I'm just the messenger, because he had a procedure today. But on five hundred, we have the same problem. Being here last week, or last month, would you like a please? And I'm just the messenger, because he couldn't come, but I wanted you to know this.
Good, thank you. If this letter. Yeah. Big thing you brought up with me that I was concerned about was. People getting access to their property once it's been towed. Now, and that depending on the hours or convenience of. Whatever tow company they're called.
Right, right.
And that might be a larger issue with. Skills of equipment of a vendor that we're using.
Right.
I don't even know how to start.
Right.
Digging into that? I guess we're talking, we want to maybe look at doing some sort of. Formments or something, trying to like tell me, like what the sheriff, you know, might call. Using different vendors of, you know, toy companies. I've specifically sued a complaint that a company that we're using may not be um. Employing equipment that meets all the safety or whatever requirements to have that type of vehicle operating. In that capacity, like. As far as headlights, headlights.
Do they have jurisdiction over, I'm just asking, does it have jurisdiction over, over them telling the sheriff of the weekend cannot go?
Who sets the rotary ordinance, Justin, sorry, who sets the rotary ordinance? Commissioner George? I probably did that something a long time ago.
I feel like we talked about.
Well, if the sheriff. I mean, if the sheriff's having something towed, cause there's a, there is a tow statute, talks about tagging, but there's an exception to the tow statute if something is preventing. Like during business hour, for example, if somebody drops their car off in the middle of business, but not parked on the, a driveway, you know, for, I'm making a tow immediately. Provided acceptance, so if the sheriff is towing, I don't know if it's the case with these towing, because it's immediately feeding ingress and express, which you can tow immediately. Or, you know, if it says it's a public health and safety hazard, then he does have the right to tow it immediately, if it's something that, you know, it's sitting in a, in a public. Your lot or private lot, you know, where you use, I think it's a seventy two hour tagging requirement.
Probably being the accident.
Yeah, so I mean, if he's towing, because it's a immediate public.
Yeah, well.
That's what it says.
I think, I think the best example that was brought to me was perhaps a disabled vehicle on the shoulder.
Which, which, yeah.
Which may not be considered on the shoulder.
Actually, we had a case over North Judson a year ago, and it was one of the same issue, and it had to do with an auto repair shop that was parking and. Hindering public access along a sidewalk, and we won that case because we said it presented an immediate health and safety hazard. If someone's parked on the shoulder of the road along the highway, there is this good argument still to be made that it presents a health and safety hazard, people parked on the side of the road.
And the, the dispute is not whether it's right to take that.
Sure.
Tow it's, it's, how long does the owner of that vehicle have to wait if he wants to. Retrieve it, hey, whatever fines, whatnot, and retrieve it from where it was towed to. If he calls the tow yard, says I wanna get my car back, and the tow yard responds. I'm busy, come back in three to five days.
Well, at, I mean, at that point, at that point, it's tow companies, because they've already performed the service on behalf of the county, now they're holding it by a called failment situation. So it's their liability if they're gonna hold it for an extent, unless we have a contract for the tow company, now, if we've got like a service contract with the tow company. What the county does, because let's say we bid it out, uh, we could put in our contract, this is, you know, how long you have. Uh we could put in our contract, this is, you know, how long you have to, it's actually a possibility. If you guys wanna bid it out, the company can say this is who we're getting used for.
I'm new enough to this, I don't even know if there's an existence of that project, if there is.
I don't think so, but I I'm just bringing up that in I don't disagree with you or agree with you or whatever, I'm just saying, the sheriff is another elected official. Say they put whatever in place, he doesn't have to abide by it.
If it's an emergency situation.
That's what I'm saying.
No, if it's an emergency, well, that's, you know.
That might be a problem, you guys, I mean, license bonded insurer requirements, so if you guys wanna fit it out, save it for the new year and say, all right. This is what you're gonna call it for a mile, what you're gonna charge your tenant, maybe that's.
It's something to do, it'd be nice to get, I mean, first set it before.
Yeah, we're we're. Other words.
Right. Something to think about. I don't know the solution, otherwise I would have.
Maybe look into bidding it out for twenty seven degrees.
So, thanks, I'm I'm worried about. So our li- our liability would end. Yeah, where's the end of our liability? If we have, if 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 we call a tow truck company to tow, tow some of these fields.
So, this brings up a good point, this did just pass forward, that's the last couple of months talking about not just bidding departments that we use contractor for services. They've got to jump to proper hoops, you know, you license sure, in some cases bonded. So our life, if if that person we hired is licensed bonded and insured, that's the extent of our life.
Okay. At least I have that. That's all I had.
I think I know for us, Justin. Right.
Oh, because I asked her for the documents and she wanted to come see the show.
We already wanted to, but I'm just here.
Thing to report to you guys, we did finally speak with a potential for the EMA position, I'm just kinda like keeping it above water like I've done in the past. Um she looks like a good potential, we got one other applicant, and then I I've verbally gotten interest from somebody out in the field that says. But I mean, we're gonna try to move more quickly, so that's why these notes are here, if it's okay, like the week goes here for now, so we can kind of revisit again and build on that. Just to let you know, that is moving along, it's just been a little bit tough. Really fast, some of the questions that have come up from the public is, why didn't the position work out before? I will say the first time it was a misfire. We were trying to do it um part time, and the guy that we selected just, and and I'll take a lot of responsibility for that, I come from the fire service, it just, it didn't work out. The second person, I think that he snickerdoodle a little, so I think he was looking outside, because when I brought up this thing about having to have the P M, the professional emergency manager. He goes, well, I'm not gonna do that. He told somebody else this in our organization, I'm not gonna do that, that's not accepted in the, or required in other states. So unfortunately, even though he looked like a big candidate, um and and he did okay once he was there, I mean, he did work on the.
He was good up to the point where he vanished with a cart and went.
Right, yeah, he was, he was looking though, obviously, the whole time, probably looking in one area, so anyways. Sorry, I mean, we tried, but I think, you know, this time we're gonna try to develop somebody, the person that is looking is not necessarily from that area. What has been in county, this is all the government or has, you know, some of the skills that could be built on, so. A lot of it has to do with work that I would do with person, go with work with them, so we we could train somebody, the right person that's not necessarily from, you know. I think it's a good time we start to train people ourselves, our process going forward. And I did emphasize though, the ADA is like one of the pinnacle things, like has they get done, has it get done, done in kind of fashion? That it impacts, you know, the the planning commission, it impacts the highway department, and it's such an important role, that's part of that director position. And so, so we change it where it's not there, that person has to focus on that. And so these are the priorities really that. Kind of in the first year, I said, you know, this is what we expect of, a lot of learning, a lot of preparation for availability. Yes, mainly and mainly the grants. Yes, I mean, that's an important thing. When we first, you know, many years ago, before, you know, I I was, you know, around during that time, I don't know if Brian was a councilperson then, but. The the council was adamant and the commissioners at the time that, you know, we are not going to make this full-time position unless that person gets granted. Same thing with the the park or, you know, other other director roles that are full-time, was that, you know, you gotta do your grants, and so it's been made very aware in interviews that. You must write.
The only thing I remain curious about, that comes from the mess. Between. Ted Obama, Ted Obama, he was, you know, moved on to the state, we had a couple similar. Turnovers, but at the time, there was a funny. Uh grant funding relationship between EMA and EMS.
Cor- correct, what what it was is we could, we could fully fund one position and then uh partially fund another position if they were willing to do the paperwork. But they weren't, at the time, the EMS director was not willing to do the paperwork.
Now they cut it, like, we can't even get it.
Yeah, this was six years, seven, no, five, six years ago, so. Okay, I didn't realize that, yeah. Here's a loop, here's me.
We are maximizing it through, because there is a lot of money that comes through, well, you can see, there is money that comes through the the district. And also a lot of the grants come through the district anyways, they're they're group type grants, and so, um you know, it's really not that difficult, they just do.
Anyone else have anything for us? Motion to adjourn.